Without increasing the bonded debt to the town. The detention in Sallyport could be funded in a future period after the debt service begins to decline. Or use the proceeds from the sale of the Dominion Building. That'd be a perfect use of those proceeds and again, I keep the bonded costs in a more realistic, more realistic thing. In the interim, the regional solution with Waterford makes sense economically for the town. And why is that? Because the cost of debt service on this option is over $60,000 a year. That's more than what we're paying right now to use Waterford. And inevitably, we'll have some operating costs if we do our own. So I think it's a short-term economic solution. And since the building, it can be framed out, so to speak, for future, for future growth. It would allow you to come back later and, and add that when, when, when it's more feasible economically. We should add to the project any other capital costs which we're funding with other funds. And I, I'm not privy to all those numbers. I read the minutes. I saw reports that there's $186,000 in site work and paving that was taken out of the project. I don't understand all that and I'm not going to apply on whether that's right or wrong. But if we are funding costs related to this project from sources other than bonding, it should be part of the total package, even though the bonding amount is a lower amount. And I'll leave that to your jurisprudence to figure, figure that out. It's reported that, and then my last comment is where the sources of funding. It's been reported that you have a grant of 175,000 that you're seeking for the generator. I was, I think that's terrific. I think it's a perfect grant for FEMA, given its purpose. I think if you take that out of the bonding sources of funding and you show that grant as a source of funding for your, for the project that I said earlier, I think was 6.167. That would reduce your project to below $6 million, I mean 5.99 something in fractions. The 6 million is a figure that's familiar to the taxpayers. And I think it's a reasonable figure to move this project forward. So my effort here is to improve transparency, find a middle ground to move this forward, to really respond to something which I think is a clear need for the community. And I thank you for your, your attention and your time.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Are there any other comments?
Yes, if I might.
Yes, Mr. Price.
Dan Price, 205 Upper Patagonia Road, East Line, Chairman of the East Line Police Commission. Steve, I love your ideas. I think, I mean, we were originally, came in at about $6 million. We weren't that far off. We did add a few things that kind of brought it up a little bit. However, nobody is considering the elephant in the room right now. Our governor just passed a new police accountability law, which means that our police department has to be accredited by, I believe it's 2025. And in order for us to be accredited, we need a building with Sallyport and cells. I, now, nobody knows what the, you know, how, how are they going to enforce this? What are the repercussions going to be if we can't do it in four or five years? But this needs to be considered and a police department without Sallyport and cells will not pass state accreditation. I'm just going to leave it at that. I mean, I think everybody knows where I stand on this building. We've been going around and around for several years. But nobody's considering this new law. It has huge impacts on the policing in this town. So I'll just leave it there.
Good point. There's probably a lot of, a lot of, what do they call that, Easter eggs in, in that new law that we've yet to discover. That is one of them and it has come up in conversation. Thank you, Dan. Any other comments and fresh comments from the public? Going once or twice. We'll move on to our meeting. And thank you all for the comments. Approval of minutes, the regular meeting July 1st, 2020.
This Kevin Serry, I move to approve the regular meeting minutes of July 1st, 2020, as submitted.
Second, Mark Salerno.
Second by Salerno. Any comments or corrections? All in favor say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Are there any abstain? I just have it. We had a special meeting on the 29th of July as well.
Move to approve the special meeting minutes of July 29th, 2020, as submitted.
Second, Mark Salerno.
Okay. Any comments or corrections? All in favor say aye.
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 Any abstain? Terrific. There's a consent calendar tonight.
This Kevin Serry, I'll move to approve the consent calendar for the meeting of August 5th, 2020, in the amount of $6,777.50.
Second, Paul Daigle.
Motion and seconded. Any comments, corrections?
It actually, it actually hurts to say the word 2020. It really does. But anyway.
It's awful. We're going to hit the rewind button. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Host. Any abstain? Consent calendar passes. We have new business tonight. The inland, the IWA P O C D presentation. I believe Ms. Williams is here. You have to unmute yourself. There you go. And this is a short little handoff to us, I guess, that you're going to deliver the P O C D virtually tonight, instead of handing us a copy at the, in the big, in the big room. And we're, our task is, I think, to go, go out and study it. Is that right?
Yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you. So, uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Just for purposes of the record, I'm Michelle Williams, Two Barrett Drive in Niantic. And I'm currently the Secretary of the Planning Commission and Chair of the Plan of Conservation and Development Steering Committee, P O C D. So I am excited tonight that after working on the P O C D since February of 2019, our subcommittee has prepared the document that you should have received via email earlier today for your review as we get closer to our submittal deadline of December 10th of this year. As we discussed the last time I was before this board, the town's plan of conservation and development has to be updated and submitted to Connecticut's Office of Policy and Management at least once every 10 years. We are due this, this December. Um, and I think we all agree that not only is this good practice in town planning, but it's also required by the state that we submit this to receive any discretionary funding. So very important for us to stick to this deadline so that we can receive things like steep grants, et cetera. Um, I think I mentioned this when I spoke with you last as well. Many towns use outside services to help in the preparation for their plans of conservation and development. And that can cost anywhere from tens to, in some cases, hundreds of thousands of dollars to complete the process. But the document that you're viewing tonight was created through the hard work of, and volunteers on the subcommittee, engaged residents and stakeholder groups. All volunteers who feel passionate about giving back to their town and shaping a sustainable future for East Line. So I just want to take a minute, if I may, to thank Gary Gashell, our town planner, who is on the meeting as well. Jennifer Lindo, the Administrative Assistant in Land Use, and our subcommittee members who were Kirk Scott, the Chair of the Planning Commission, Rich Gordon, who's also on the Planning Commission, Rosemary Ostfeld, a member of Inland Wetlands, Norm Peck from Zoning, and Larry Fitzgerald, who was formerly on the Planning Commission, but is known by many of you as an active volunteer resident. So if you're familiar with the previous slash current P O C D, you'll notice a few changes in the document that you've received today. First thing is per state requirement, since the last update, this document includes greater detail and more information about our sewer services and the sewer shed map. And each section addresses sustainability issues as they apply to East Line. You'll also note that the document is over 100 pages shorter, so not quite as long a read as the last one. We're proud of what's included and thank you. And we've worked really hard to streamline the document, but not its content. So we worked really diligently to write it in a way that it can be more user-friendly, but no less effective. We think it's as information-packed as ever. So I'd also like to call your attention to the stakeholder engagement process that's outlined in Chapter 2. And there you'll see the many ways that we engaged resident feedback to create this document. That's something as a committee, we are very proud of. We had a lot, a lot of public involvement in creating the document. So you can see that outline there. Just procedurally receiving the draft today sets off our public approval process. So that includes further review by yourselves, review by the Planning Commission. The document will be published by the end of September to the town's website. The Planning Commission will conduct a public hearing. You can also conduct one if you want to. It's optional. I don't believe you have in the past, but that option exists. The Planning Commission must conduct one, so there definitely will be at least one public hearing on this. And then any edits will be made as needed. And finally, the Planning Commission will approve and submit the document December or this year. Myself or Gary can go through any of the specifics on the timeline if you have, want more information. Last thing, this is a draft. You are the first group to see it really outside of the subcommittee. So you're going to find a few things, missing table numbers. We are adding a matrix of recommendations to the end. You'll see notes on that. You know, still working out some of the formatting, so understand that that's where that is as a draft. But the background information, the recommendations, those are all in their final approved states and have been reviewed and discussed and ultimately approved by the P O C D Steering Committee. So the meat of the document is what it's intended to be. So thank you again for this time tonight and I look forward to our continued discussion on this 10-year plan for East Line.
Thank you, Michelle. I know how hard you worked on this. I saw you in many, many meetings, walking by the, the room over here and, and even put my head in a few times and, and also gave some input when I was asked to. You, you chaired a very, very power, your subcommittee was made up of giants in our community. When you listed them off, I'm like, wow, 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 wow. That's great. And I know they all helped you out, but you know, to chair that group and, and to, you know, the fact that it's coming from us and not some hired consultant makes it organic and makes it real and, and I think makes it more. We're going to have a whole long period of time of, I can't wait to read it in its entirety now that we have it. And I'm sure the selectmen will join me when you make that presentation, when you come back to the Board of Selectmen, when we'll have a chance to question and, and make comments. You'll be filled with praise for all the work you've done and, and we look forward to reading this. So, 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 so the selectmen know we have some homework to do here. We do need to get through it with Michelle's help. It's 100 pages less, which is really good. But, but we need to get through it and we need to be thorough about it. And we will schedule Michelle and her group, I imagine, and Gary and others to come back. And we'll want to talk about it. We'll want to talk about it. And, and that might be in 30 days or 45 days or so and we'll do that then. Thank you for all your work, Michelle. Good for you. Thank you.
Hey, Mark, as ex officio, I would just like to also say thank you to Michelle. This started over a year ago. I watched, I watched this subcommittee form. It was a daunting task ahead of them. They had 220 pages. They had a lot of stuff they had to do. They worked, they met many times a month. I know they've given up weekends to do this. All selfless. Michelle, you were very organized with this and you put together a great team. I just want to thank you for it. I'm looking forward to seeing your product. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good point. Now, you were not given an extension based on the COVID situation. December, it was December and you needed to hit that number, right?
Yes. So we did lose a few months there, as many of us lost a few months of our lives. So the P O C D subcommittee was not spared. But I think, you know, a lot of the work we did with the community ahead of time really set a good foundation and we were able to stay on schedule.
Thank you again, Michelle. After December, we'll want to put together a charter revision committee and I know just the person to chair it. We'll talk later. Thank you again and we look forward to reading it. And the selectmen have it in their inbox now or will and, and by all means, look forward to seeing you again. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
All right. And Kurt, there's a few others here on, on the call. Much appreciate everybody.
Rich.
Yep. Yep. So thank you. And there's a few phone numbers that are not identified. They could be members of that committee. Thank you all for your service to, to our town. Anna, do you want to talk about the carryover emergency management money for, is that the AED machines?
Yes, it is. So back some years ago, the Ambulance Association purchased AED machines for all of the town buildings. And so over time, it expire. And so beginning last year, the Emergency Management Department started putting funds in their budget in order to do this. So last year, they put $1,000 in, in their budget. However, to purchase a replacement ADA, AED rather, I'm sorry, is $1,445. So they're, they're requesting to carry the $1,000 over to be added to the $1,000 in their budget this year so that they can purchase the first replacement one, replacement one, which is for the field services building.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion so we can discuss it. Kevin Serry, I'll move to approve the carryover of the remaining balance of $1,000 and account 01-25-224-300-244 AED supplies from the 2019-20 budget to account 01-25-214-300-244 AED supplies in the 2020-2021 budget and forward to the Board of Finance for approval.
Mark Salerno, I will second that.
Motion and second. Are there any comments or questions for Anna on this? We put away $1,000 for an item that costs 1,400. So there has to be some carryover where we push it forward so we can go ahead and buy one. Makes sense. All in favor say aye.
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 Host. Any abstain? I just have it. Thank you. And we have some departmental transfers in the year as we are moving into the next year and pay our bills of last year, fiscal year. We have some departmental transfers. As outlined in your, in your papers.
I'll put a motion out, Mark, so we can move forward. This is Kevin Serry. Move to ratified departmental transfers in the amount of $83,869.47 processed for fiscal year and June 30, 2020, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval.
Mark Salerno, second.
Second, are there any comments or questions for Anna? On any items? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Terrific. I just have it. Presentation, discussion of possible action of the Public Safety Building, bonding of $2,200,000. Mr. Daigle, Chair of the Vision Committee, which was a bipartisan citizen slash elected official slash appointed official slash cook and candlestick maker and, you know, everybody was mixed in together. So we had a good representation from our, from our community. And we had a great leader in Mr. Daigle and came up with what we thought was a good plan. So, Mr. Daigle, you bring forward tonight perhaps an amended proposal?
Yeah, I'd like to open the discussion with some good news. Both the low bidder and the second lowest bidder have both agreed to extend their bids to October 22nd, which gives us the opportunity to, to go forward depending on Board of Finance and Citizens of East Line's decision-making.
What's the date again?
October 22nd, a two-month extension from the August 22nd date. Okay. The next thing I'd like to talk up before I prevent some options for discussion amongst us and I, is I think it's imperative, there was a, some information submitted to, during the Board of Finance meeting that was addressing financial costs, total costs of the projects. And to Mr. Larson's point, I think that needs to be readdressed. And specifically categorization of project costs, financing, financial costs, financing costs, any related cost. I would like to have that discussion with the board that the financing costs are what they are. I'd like to characterize those costs, both short-term and bond costs, and present that to the Board of Finance. I think Anna did a very good job identifying the total bonding costs. And Anna and I have exchanged some information for the finance cost. So I'd like to put those in a category and you share them with the Board of Finance if we, as the Board of Selectmen, decide to move forward. The, the record that was submitted had some information on it. Due to the lateness of the meeting and when it was presented, I did not have the opportunity to respond to those items. Several of the items were responded to during a Board of, I'm, excuse me, a Vision Committee meeting back in May that was submitted by the Chairperson of the Board of Finance. And I would, for the, the public record, like, plan to, if we move forward, to address those items so that everyone has an understanding of why we did or did not include certain items. So as long as we can hold that for the end in case we get to a meeting. And before I get into the three options, if, if we as a Board of Selectmen decide to proceed and resubmit the $7.2 million bond recommendation to the Board of Finest, Finance, with Kevin's series concurrence, I would be honored and privileged to make that motion at the end of today's meeting if we get to that point. So let's move on to the three options for open discussion. The first one is to, to resubmit the, the original plan of 7.2 million, which includes the two bid alt ads for the Sallyport, bid alt add, deduct for the Sallyport at 810,000 and also the elevator cab. I think if we move forward this, we present to the Board of Finance and if their approval is, is gained in a second attempt, it would move on to the, to referendum. And I think reviewing the costs, presenting them maybe a little differently than I did the last time and addressing some of the items in the record that was submitted regarding related costs. I, I think it'd be much better to have that cleared up and understood. The second option that we can open for discussion is to remove the bid alt add for the calibrate, the elevator cab, which is $201,051, which would reduce the 7.2 million proposal that we previously approved down to approximately 7 million. And finally, the last option for open for discussion is in addition to the elevator cab, remove the bid alt deduct for the Sallyport and cells at 810,591, which would reduce it down to about 6.19 million. Sorry to repeat what Mr. Larson stated earlier, but he's, he stole my, my thunder a little bit. But at this time, I'd like to open that up for, for discussion to see what the Board of Selectmen favor as far as going, moving forward and try and answer any questions the Board of Selectmen members may have. And we also have Silver Petricelli with us tonight if the, there's some questions that I can't answer as well. So, yes, open up the floor to discussion.
Mark, may I start?
Sure, sure, Mark.
So the plan to remove the Sallyport and the holding cells, I do not support. And I will show you why. First of all, we just got some move information today by Dan Price, which was interesting. Second of all, I believe it's going to cost this town more money in the long run to continue to lease from Waterford. Mark, is it all right? Can you share my screen? I put together a.
Yeah, let me see if I can do that.
Or.
I'll make you a host.
Okay.
Changed you to the host. I don't know if you have to change me back at the end. So then you'll be able to share the screen.
Can you see my screen?
No, you're going to hit the button at the bottom of your screen that says share screen.
Got it.
And then you probably pick your screen.
The quest screen.
Does it?
Share.
Can I see you?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you see that?
Yeah.
Okay. So I went through the numbers. As Paul said, the cost of building the whole, holding cells is 810,591. I also believe that includes contingency. Is that correct, Paul?
Correct.
I spoke, I with Ann, Anna yesterday. The interest rates that we're getting right now are 1.84%, which is almost record lows. If you comp, if you do a 20-year loan, which is what we plan on doing at a rate of 1.84%, that comes to an average annual, well, an annual cost of $48,480. Right now, we're paying Waterford $46,557 and in the contract, we have a 5% contracted increase per annum. If we assume that holds and they don't raise the rates beyond that in our next time we go to agree with them and we continue to get a 5% increase, then it will end up costing us over $570,000 more to lease over the 20 years. The chart you're seeing above, the orange line is the current line, which would be a fixed cost over 20 years to finance the holding cells. The gray line is the line of the anticipated increase of fees that we're going to pay to Waterford just to continue to maintain what we have now. These numbers don't even include the lost revenues, well, not the lost revenues, but the lost time our police officers are going to have transporting people to and from Waterford and any anticipated increases beyond the 5%. Even if you went down to 3%, it's around $240,000 more. So based on that financially, along with other reasons, I cannot support that. I think this is financially responsible. And if you go down here, I have all the numbers. You could, you could look at them, all right, with interest rates. That being, go ahead.
I'll let you finish.
Okay. That being said, the idea of renovating buildings, I'm going to, I'm going to bring it back, Mark. So let me.
Yeah, you hit that bottom. It says share screen and you just get rid of that.
Stop, share. Okay.
Hey.
So let me just finish with this. So the idea of renovating buildings as needed in town, it's nothing new. We've been doing it for a long time. We started with the Public Works Building 10 years ago where we bought a used building and we renovated it. And we're using it now for our public works. This building was on the outskirts of town and it's serving us very well. When we went to go do the new schools, we started at 70 million. By the time the work, the, the group got, continued the work, it ended up around 90 to 95 million dollars. We took a step back. We realized that we didn't need to have a brand-new building. We had three functional schools that could be renovated and we didn't need to renovate as new as the state told us where we needed to replace windows that were 10 years old. We renovated as needed and we were able to get the cost down to 35 to 37 million if you include the short-term borrowing. Waterford, on the other hand, has not done this. They've continued to build new and they've continued, I mean, they just put a $15 million Public Works Building in their town. And it's paying off financially for us. If you want to compare to Waterford, in 2002, our mill rate was 43% higher than it was in Water, than Waterford. In 2010, it went down to 32%. In 2020, we're within 0.1% of the mill rate. So us being creative, us looking at renovating buildings, not necessarily renovating as new and replacing things that have lifespan in them, has saved this town money and we actually are on par with Waterford, which is unbelievable for anyone that's been in this town for a long time. Lastly, I'd just like to say, the seller building now, as has been suggested, is not responsible to me. We have a building. This will, this can satisfy our needs. I do believe we need to do these holding cells. I do believe it's financially responsible. And I would like to move it back to the Board of Finance to reconsider that.
Thank you. I need to point out something in your, in your presentation. But I, I first need you to go to my, my little square and hit the three dots and make me the host again. I don't like not being the host. I'm joking. Can you figure that out? It says make host.
I did.
Thank you. You're, you're, I appreciate the thought that went into that, Mr. Salerno. However, you, your calculation's a little flawed in that when I approached Waterford three years ago to strike a deal to rent some space from them, it was under the understanding that this would be a short-term temporary situation. If, and I've had some discussions with the first selectmen and the chief over there since then. If we were to strike a deal that would be a 10 or 20-year deal, that price tag goes way up. They, they don't have, they don't have the room for us. There's going to have to be some shifting of the building a little bit for, for evidence.
uh, storage for the impound lot. It has some space conditions. And frankly, um, you know, we need to share the costs of little things like janitorial services, like, um, capital expenses. When the fingerprint machine goes down and you need to buy a new one, we need to be part of that purchase, et cetera, et cetera. Waterford was a very good neighbor to us when we wanted to go independent and this was our, our major hurdle that we needed to, uh, overcome. And they were there for us. But, um, if they're talking about a long-term regional solution and this, you know, I, I too believe that, you know, we should really be thinking about regional approaches in, in, in our approach to government. But we're also, based on what Mr. Price Tom spoke about earlier and what I've heard coming from the state legislature, that this new police accountability bill doesn't allow for that kind of stuff. We're talking about you needing to certify wholly on your own. I think we need to think about making sure we're building a proper police station. It's, it serves its basic proper functions. I too support building the cells and the Sally Port, uh, but, but, and when I say your, your math is flawed only to the, to the, only to the positive of that argument, that the, the costs are going to rise rather dramatically. Now, they might not go up 5% a year. Once we get to whatever that number is, it might be 50, 75, 80,000 a year for the use of their facilities, uh, it might be more. But then it would just go up on a GWI, a gross wage increase, um, um, in, in, in inflation, uh, increase, uh, rather than the standard 5%. But, um, thank you for doing the homework on that, Mrs. Salerno. This makes a whole lot of sense, uh, to do it. I'd like to hear from other Selectmen.
Like to comment?
Yes, Mrs. Hardy?
I can support the, uh, the Sally Port and the cells for several reasons. First of all, the amount of time it takes from our officers to leave town, go over to Waterford, also transporting the prisoner, uh, or the offender, shall I say. Their, um, officer has to take that, that individual in their vehicle. Oftentimes, the offender is, um, not, not clean. Time of COVID, I think this endangers our officers, uh, to have, um, the people that are arrested, uh, in the vehicle with them, not only law, and that also removes them from town. And, uh, my other concern is, uh, the chain of, the chain of the, of evidence and the security of evidence, uh, transporting from town to town. And I believe that we, we, we had these things in mind when we went to an independent police department and I think it's our job to carry through and make this the facility that it should be. And I don't think that can happen, uh, without the security of the Sally Port, um, and the holding cells. I've heard many people refer to this as, "Why do we need a jail?" This isn't jail. It's a holding cell, um, until the, uh, the accused or the arrested person, uh, can be safely transported to the court hearing or whatever is going to happen. So, thank you, Mark, for doing that additional work. I appreciate it and I'm not willing to let go of this.
Okay.
Kevin?
Okay. You know, and Steve Larson said, you know, an eternity ago or a lifetime ago, he's on the Board of Finance. It, it wasn't that long ago, but Steve was very meticulous and thorough. And when he says something, it were, it's worth merit to, to, you know, at least respond to it too. And what Mr. Riosi said as well, "I think if time and money weren't as much of a concern, we could wait, uh, until we could find a location, build something new. It's gonna be much more expensive." We know that, as we've talked about tonight, uh, you know, historic lows in, in interest rates too. But the facility they're in right now, if we waited three or four years, we are endangering the safety of not only the public, but our officers. If you remember about a year ago, or a little over that, there was a, a murder at the Starlight Motel. And it was when they were talking to what was, they thought, a witness in that event in a unsecure lo- room at the current PD where that person developed into a suspect. Fortunately, the person did not become agitated or combative or something like that, but we had no place to put that person in any type of detention. That's a definite safety violation to our, uh, our officers that we asked to be there. Going on, uh, looking back to asking for the 6 million. I think that was a very optimistic thing we did at the time. We should have probably asked for more, but I think our enthusiasm for having the police have an opportunity to move into a real building, uh, probably led us to lowball that at the time. But when it got passed on to the Public Safety Vision Committee, we were very thorough under Paul, Dan, Lisa Picarazzi, so many people were thorough, lots of good questions, bipartisan support. And after several, several months, looking at every option unanimously, we recommended this because we thought it fit the best fit for the safety of not only our officers, but the community. We have a full-time, 24-hour man facility where if somebody runs in there because they're feeling threatened or something like that, you have a place to put them and they can safely be secured from anybody coming in. Right now, they have to go to a phone on the side of an unoccupied building and try and dial for dispatch, hoping somebody gets to them, uh, before if somebody was coming after them, they would be, uh, putting the safety. If we just moved them into the building right now with the money we had available, we're basically moving it from an awful building into a building that, it, all we're doing really is it heats and cools a little better, it doesn't flood, wind and rain don't come through the windows and there's no mold. And just to talk about the building they're in right now, on April, or July, just last week, again, eight, the, uh, air conditioning wasn't working. It was 86 in the men's locker room, 82 in the hallways. We wouldn't ask our town hall employees, we wouldn't ask our Public Works employees, we wouldn't ask our educators or students. We wouldn't tolerate them working in that environment. But for the times the police officers have to work in the police station, we're asking them to do that. I think Dan Price brought up a really good point with the new legislation. We may not have an option for, uh, cells in a Sally Port in order to be considered a viable police and certifiable, certified police department. So I think all these things considered, we need to move forward with the current plan to bring them in, uh, with some of the things that Paul's gonna address later on. But I don't mind having an option. What can we possibly do if it really comes necessary? Maybe take out the whole elevator, which all combined, and we had talked about this, maybe putting it on the outside of the building at some future point in time. That would allow us to get the project down to about 6.7 million, somewhere in that area where you would get dispatch and the Sally Ports in there. So I think, uh, I'm definitely favorable going back with the full plan, but looking at giving the Board of Finance an option if they feel they need to see that. And I'm, I'm all set. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Dan, you, you would also talk...
Yeah, thank you. I, I appreciate it very much what Steve Larson had, had, um, suggested and Paul, um, uh, about eliminating the Sally Port. And for a while, I was starting to think that I, I would support that position, but, uh, there's been a big change and the big change is the Police Accountability Act. And that is a game changer, not just, uh, for certification, uh, issues, but, uh, it is, there's a huge liability component, uh, to that piece of legislation. And it hasn't fully been appreciated yet. You were talking about Easter eggs, Mark. Yeah, they're in there. Once you transport a, a prisoner to another jurisdiction, uh, then the responsibility will shift i- it, when you transfer that prisoner. But, uh, if there was something that happens downstream from when you release that person to their custody, trust me, uh, both police departments are gonna be sued, uh, both of the, any of the offi- officers involved in that chain of custody of that prisoner, uh, are, are going to, uh, face potential liability. It's gonna be very difficult to attract good, uh, police officers, um, if we cannot control or give them the ability, uh, to control what happens with people they take into custody. So, uh, we're in a different world now. I, I hope everybody can appreciate that. And I really think we have to do the full project. Anything less than that, um, there'll be too many unknowns up for the town. So, uh, I support the full project.
Thanks, Dan.
All right. We're finished with the topic of the Sally Port and the cells. The elevator, uh, I think we have to be aware of ADA requirements, which also have recently changed. Previously, if you were going to, um, just rehab a building as opposed to building as new, you did not have to, uh, you did not have to follow all of the ADA requirements. I haven't had the chance to further research this because I just learned this a couple of days ago, that that exception no longer exists. And while we're not currently going to be utilizing for public access the second floor, I don't think that we should be waiting that long. Is a possible, there's possible income to be generated from that, but our primary thing, our primary responsibility for the elevator is the ADA accessibility. And I think it, it also limits us, as I said, in our ability to, uh, perhaps do, uh, some regional things. There's been talk, I think Mr. Larson, and himself brought up the idea of more regional things that could go on in that, in that second story with, uh, officers from other towns coming to, uh, uh, updated meetings and things which are required for certification. We already paid to send several, some of our officers to those. We pay other towns, uh, to, to do that. So it's a possibility. We have an ideal location right off from I-95, easy for others, uh, for officers from other towns to access this facility. And I think, uh, those are some things that we should be looking at. So I see that as twofold. There are probably some other people that have some ideas to express, but as I look at the financial and I go back to figures that were presented to us, um, by Anna, um, and I also talked with the assessor. So, at a 250,000, a home app, a, a home assessed at 250,000, this would cost, um, that person an additional $49.20 a year. That's $410 a month. $350,000 appraisal or assessment, that's an extra $68.39 a year. That's $5.74 a month. That's not, that's two cups of Starbucks coffee a month that you'd have to give up. 450,000, uh, comes to 88.50 for the year, $7.38 a month. That's what we're quibbling over. The average residential value, according to the assessor's office for the town, is 335,000, uh, 335, uh, value. So, they're in the cat, so the average person's in the category of $5.74 a month. I hope those are some figures that the Board of Finance should take into consideration and review, um, as they, uh, review our request. That's it.
Yeah, just, uh, one point of clarification. From an ADA compliance standpoint, uh, Mrs. Hardy, uh, there is ADA compliant a- access to the second floor, uh, at the back of the building. The reason the Vision Committee decided not to rely on that solely, uh, was, uh, access to that portion, the back of the building is gonna be secured for police business only. And in the interim bef- uh, you know, we had a discussion about not putting the cabin, uh, but we don't want day-to-day traffic back where the police control, where their vehicles are parked, uh, and so on and so forth, uh, to have the public have to get to the second floor via that, that egress point. Uh, we, it is being graded to put handicap vehicles back there in case there's a need for it, but, uh, I just wanted to make it very clear. The current plan as submitted, um, without the, an operating elevator does meet ADA requirements. So, just wanted to clarify that point. So I wanna give you, give you my opinion and I've talked with a couple of members of the Vision Committee, uh, not everyone. I can tell you I did not receive one phone call from a Vision Committee member regarding, uh, reduction of the plan, uh, that the Vision Committee approved, that, uh, we, the Board of Selectmen approved. And I wholeheartedly support going forward with the plan as originally identified. It is the right thing for so many reasons. You can argue about the location of the building. You can argue, and, and not everyone in town likes the location. Not everyone in town likes the fact that we bought a building, but we did buy a building. The Vision Committee was tasked not to come up with options. We were tasked to go, come up with a functional building at the most reasonable cost to bring value to the town, the citizens of the town and to give our public safety personnel a safe and professional space to conduct their business and protect the citizens of East Line. What has been brought forward meets all those objectives. It does not meet every citizen's concern. We're never gonna get unanimous decision on, on anything in town. So, I, I would like to close with, my recommendation is to move forward with the plan that we originally approved. Be prepared to discuss some of the comments that were made at the Board of Finance Committee and the, uh, record that was submitted regarding the costs. There's nothing to be gained, that I believe the Vision Committee was very transparent. I did not address those items, uh, because I had already addressed them once i- in a Vision Committee meeting. I certainly will, uh, now that we're in front of that committee, address those items so that the citizens of East Line that didn't read the Vision Committee meetings or didn't participate in our meetings will have a clear understanding of what the total project costs, uh, finan- bonding costs are, financial costs, which, you know, Anna did an outstanding job. Rosemary, excuse me, uh, Mrs. Hardy just repeated the cost to the, uh, to the taxpayers. And, uh, this is a value. It solves a 20-year-old problem and it also gives us the opportunity to grow in the future with the second floor. So, I'll conclude my comments with, I support moving forward with the 7.2 million dollar plan that we have previously approved.
Mr. Nickerson, could I ask, um, Ms. Johnson a question? Because I think that you said that after, that after, uh, something about three years in terms of the funding, uh, that after three years, the, the figure, this, uh, type of figure doesn't kick in until three years is actually lower, the figures that I gave?
So, um, right, so, um, the information that, um, was included in the presentation does the average cost over, um, the full financing life of, of the 20 years. And when we issue the debt, we were, were, um, the plan is to phase it in over three different years. So we wouldn't bond the full 7.2 million dollars all at one time.
So this would be through short-term bonding then?
So, right, so you do a combination of, um, short-term financing and, um, you know, then permanently, um, issuing bonds. So, um, like this year, we're going to bond $3 million of the projects. And at this point, we, um, we actually issued 2 million in, um, in notes because, um, you know, uh, we were capped at the 5 million for the project at the time we did our financing for the year.
Thank you for the clarification. Wanted to make sure that I was accurate. I'd like to thank Mr. Larson for his work in giving us some ideas. Mr. Riosi, I had spoken with, thank him for his ideas. One of his ideas had been to, uh, use the Roxbury Road property. And actually, that was one of my early-on ideas that I thought for many of the reasons that you mentioned, Mr. Riosi. Uh, but I, I feel honestly that this plan is better. I think the, the property itself is better. And we still have some uses for that property on, uh, Roxbury Road besides just the, just the, um, sand and sho- uh, sand and snow shed. I mean, uh, what do I wanna say? Sand and, and snow. Yeah. So, I think this expands our opportunities in town. It still leaves us with Roxbury Road property. It still leaves us with Roxbury Road property, which may have some additional uses. So anyway, thank you, thank you for your contact, thank you for your work. And I believe I can speak for the rest of the board that we have listened to many of the people who have, many of the residents who have contacted us and considered their thoughts and input. So thank you, and thank you for the, to the other residents who have contacted all of us with their comments and their input.
And Roseanne, just to follow up on, on Ed's comment, that it is a good idea, the Roxbury Road, but the biggest problem we ran into was, is it a floodplain?
Right. That's right. We'd have to build that up on the second.
That was, that was, yeah, one of my favorite spots with that.
Remove the E and M building. Right. For the comments, I'll, I'll make a comment and then we'll look for a motion. I basically, enough is enough. We bought a building with a two-to-one margin in a referendum a year ago. We bought the building with overwhelming approval. It was talked about in three public meetings, that this is a $6 million project, not a five. Board of Finance reduced it to five because they couldn't agree that night on how to do it. They said, we'll give you five. Come back for the extra million dollars, we'll give it to you with detail. By, at that point in time, we did not have money for an architect and engineering review. We were also under some obligation to the Honeywell Corporation to keep the negotiation private as they weren't sure if they were going to move or not. If they weren't selling it to us, they were thinking about moving some of their operation here versus moving them out. They weren't sure, and they were trying to figure out whether they had a buyer in us. So we were all trying to figure this out at the same time and letting the puzzle pieces all fit. We did what we had to do. We did bring in an architect who was not, not Brian Cleveland, someone else. And this architect walked through the building, did some work, looked at the building, looked at the code, and gave us an estimate of $6 million. Since then, with the Vision Committee coming up with the plan, we've added value into the building like the elevator cab that wasn't, it's not required. We have, we have entrance in the back, but you know, the Vision Committee, again bipartisan, made up of a bunch of people in our town, said, no, 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 we want to secure a lot in the back, and we want that to be police only, and it's important for the safety of our police officers and for our equipment to, to have that secure lot. So we don't want public entrance in the back. Some other things were added as well, some things were taken out. This is, you know, so we relied on that $6 million initially. That's what we had, that was fact at the time. We've done a great job of knocking this down to a right level. But you know, let's talk about a new building. $12 million, and then you're still going to put an addition on to the library. This solves both the problems. I, enough is enough. I've heard so much wild accusation, misinformation, pulling things out of the sky, saying it's going to cost this and it's going to cost that. Paul will address many of those things. I've read some things on Facebook that, you know, well, I don't even want to go there to give it any credibility. It's not worth it. Folks, you know, we'll have some kind of a public information session. I guess we'll do it on Zoom. I guess we'll broadcast it. This is a very tough, difficult way to govern and govern fairly and try to get our message out to the public. We'll do that. I'm glad that people are able to join us that do want to contribute to the meeting. It's appreciated. But enough is enough. This town has got a black eye on this, on this whole police, public safety proper facility for coming up on two decades. It's, we need to do it, we should do it now. We see what's going on in the world. Our police needs to be secure. The people that they arrest and detain need to be secure. We need the proper equipment, et cetera, et cetera. So I, I thank you, Paul, I thank you, Vision Committee, and the Board of Selectment for overwhelmingly and unanimously voting for this plan. It sounds like we're all pushing for the $7.2 million plan again, but I'll wait to hear a motion.
Before I make, before I make a motion, Kevin, it's okay with you?
Go ahead.
I would just like to reconfirm with Anna that you previously noted that the Bond Council stated that we do not have to read the entire bond language into record, and that reading the title is sufficient, along with the entire bond resolution being available to the public in the town's clerk's office. That still stands?
Yes, and I recommend that you also read Section 1, because Section 1, the title, Section 1 identifies that you're increasing the original resolution of 5 million by 2.2 for a total of 7.2. That way, it's clear, because the titles of the resolution do not list all of that detail.
Well, now I'm going to have to go find the whole thing.
And it's just Kevin's motion. And it's just the one that says, "It's hereby amended to increase the amount of each of the appropriation and the bond authorization set forth therein by 2.2 from 5 to 7.2," said resolution. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
I'll refer to you for expediency of making the motion, sir.
Okay, this Kevin's here, I'll make the following resolution resolve. That the resolution entitled "Resolution Amending a Resolution Making an Appropriation in the Amount of $5 Million for the Planning, Design, Acquisition, Construction, Equipment, and Furnishing of a Public Safety Building and Authorizing the Issuance of $5 Million Bonds of the Town to Meet Said Appropriation and Pending the Issuance Thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowings for Such Purpose." As per Section 1 of the resolution, the resolution entitled "Resolution Making an Appropriation in the Amount of $5 Million for the Planning, Design, Acquisition, Construction, Equipment, and Furnishing of a Public Safety Building and Authorizing the Issuance of $5 Million Bonds of the Town to Meet Said Appropriation and Pending the Issuance Thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowings for Such Purpose." Adopted at a referendum held February 20, 2019, the resolution is hereby amended to increase the amount of each of the appropriation and the bond authorization set forth therein by $2,200,000 from $5 million to $7,200,000. Said resolution, a copy of which is attached hereto, is hereby adopted and recommended for approval by the Board of Finance and the legal voters of the town. At a special town meeting, we waive reading the resolution in its entirety. A copy has been and will continue to be available for inspection in the town clerk's office.
Paul Vagel's second.
We have a motion, and it's been seconded. Is there any further comment? Favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? As the record shows, it's an unanimous vote for the second time.
Hey, Mark, could I add one, one thing?
I guess you can.
Is it, you know, at the last meeting, if it's possible to ask the Board of Finance to allow the presentation to go before the public comment? You know, usually they have delegations, new business, and then public discussion. It may be helpful if the public hears the presentation before, you know, before commenting, as we used to do in zoning.
Yeah, right, of course. And it's traditional and bland use. I, you know, that rec, that recommendation will go to them or to, for them to exercise their, the rules, their own commission, which is to limit a public comment to five minutes, which wasn't done last time, made for a very long meeting. So I, listen, presentation should be short. They've already heard it. Paul's going to clear up all the questions and the misinformation that they assumed. So we'll, we'll clear some of that stuff up. It should be a quick meeting. So, but based on your comment, they will get that as a recommendation. I agree.
Thank you.
Okay, we can move on in our agenda then. We added a fifth item, it's a new business, which is Mosul Lane. Folks, I kind of mentioned it to you in passing or at an executive meeting, I believe, that the residents and the Board of Directors of Old Black Point would like to buy Mosul Lane, which is the roadway, very small, narrow roadway that, that cuts between their tennis courts and their tennis clubhouse. Or it's really maybe a storage shack slash tennis clubhouse. I don't think it's much of, it's not very ornate. But you know, that's where they perform, that's where they have their summer camp and where kids play and all that. And the lane serves no purpose, this asphalt, yet it is a throughway and it is a town road. And they've asked for us to consider abandoning it or a portion of it as a town road in a, in a, in exchange. They would pay us a nominal fee to do that, and that we would give that land back to the association. Of course, it becomes taxable money, but it will create more of a safe passageway for the residents and tennis patrons and then the kids in the camp up there and all that. It meets with overwhelming approval by their Board of Directors and their leadership in their neighborhood. And what I'm asking you to do tonight is to allow me to forward it to the Board of Planning, the Planning Commission, for an 8-30G review, which is a referral, and also to give me permission to schedule a public hearing in the future. I'm not sure if it'll be at the next meeting or the meeting after. It'll be based on the 8-30G coming back from planning and be available at the public hearing. If there's a motion, we, or if there's questions? If somebody would give me an idea of what the motion should read, I can come, because it's not in my, in the draft motions at all that I have.
Roseanne has a motion.
Okay, great.
He's like to really yell at you, Kevin.
Move to review the Mosul Lane item to the Planning Commission for an 8-30G review and schedule a future public hearing.
This is Mark Salerno, I will second that.
Motion and seconded. Any comments or questions? And we will have that opportunity for many more questions, and we'll have the town attorney come up and give the whole map and show you what it's like. And we'll have the President of the Association, Dr. Henry Andor, come up as well with, with his, with the residents of my community would like to see. So that will be in the future, and thank you for, for the motion. Second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Terrific. Next on our agenda, my, I had a computer set up for Mrs. Hardy in the big room, as you noticed. And now she's in my room. So for the record, we are in the same room. I'm not in the same room as Ann Santoro. Communications, did we receive any? We didn't receive any this time. We do have some things to pass along to you, and they'll be in your packet for the next meeting. Ex officio reports, Mrs. Hardy's here. Okay, these are weird times for ex officio reports, I know. But would, would anybody like to go? I, really nothing at all from Parks and Recs, so I'm good. Okay. Mark Salerno, anything?
Yeah, planning, obviously, they, they passed the POCD on to us. We have 60 days to do that. They also have a public hearing going on for a four-lot subdivision up in the north end of town, up near a street off Upper Patty Gansett Road. The street escapes you right now. That's all I have.
Okay. Paul?
Nothing, harbor management has not met, and Inland Wetlands has an upcoming meeting next week. They haven't met since our last meeting for further discussion on the Upland Review area proposed or discussed change from 100 feet to 500 feet. So hopefully, I'll have something to report at our next meeting. That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yeah, both of my meetings were canceled either because of the storm or Zoom issues, I guess. So I have nothing to report.
Zoom issues, huh?
Zoom issues, you know? It's a, it's a new world for a lot of people, so.
So I'm going to take this opportunity to update the Selectment and those citizens who have stuck around. We're having some big-time problems with EverSource. If you're without power still, you just might be for a while. They have not made very much progress at all today. A little bit, I'm getting, during our meeting, I'm also getting and watching emails fly back and forth with EverSource, the governor, and our emergency management director is, he rolled up his sleeves and throwing a couple in there as well. So we're working on it, we're doing the best we can. Our crews worked all day on Tuesday, the storm hit. They worked all night, and then they stayed and worked all, it was like a snowstorm where they worked, you know, 36 hours before they could knock off. They worked, and they cleared a lot of trees and brushed in the roadways, et cetera. But anything with wires down, they couldn't touch, of course. We were waiting for EverSource to come and deactivate lines so that they can cut up trees, and then EverSource would come back and restore. Not a lot of restoration. We gave them five must-do priority items today. None of the five were done at the beginning of this meeting. I know they're still out there, and they'll work around the clock. The men and women of EverSource are proud. They're, they're, they do serve us, and they serve us in our time of need. It just, sometimes the organization, the communication, and the liaison of communication that we get from the company to our emergency management centers aren't, aren't up to our expectations. And sometimes they are. But, but it's been a little while since we had a major storm in this area, and and frankly, it's fallen apart. I believe, and I was told, and I didn't get on it myself, that their, their reporting system, so if you're a citizen, you lose your power, and you want to get online or call in to let them know you're out of power, that wasn't working last night. There are, there were 700,000 people without power as a result of this little storm. This, this little tropical storm that lasted, you know, minutes, not hours and hours. Yeah, maybe a couple hours. But it packed a punch, and it came at the time of the year where the trees are full and the leaves were weighing the branches down, and it was just enough. It was just enough. So 700,000 people, and I heard it's down to 600,000. There are towns in our area, Old Lime, Lime, Colchester, that were almost 100% out of power. Those, those places and a lot of places up north tend to get a lot of attention when the whole town is out. But I know our main street is on, and our, Orlando's Road, I think, was re-energized. But, but there's a lot of places out. Folks, if you're somehow watching this, I don't know why you'd be wasting your, the battery on your cell phone watching this if you're without power, but if somehow you're getting this message, and I've put messages out on the town website and Facebook and all that. We're working on it, and we're, we're working as best we can. If you have a non-emergency and you'd like to call in, 739-5900 is the phone number. That's 860-739-5900. That's a 24-hour number. During the day, I think the police station answer it. At night, dispatch does. I think dispatch answers it all the time now. You can let them know of your trouble. You might have an individual situation where you're on oxygen and you need the electricity or something like that, and you might be able to suggest someplace you can go. We have not opened a shelter. We have not had a, a huge, we haven't had people ask for us to open the shelter yet. But if this goes into the weekend, we will more than likely have to open the shelter. The problem, obviously, is, by the way, COVID. Okay, so we put everybody in the gym on cots, breathing the air, and it's just not, it's not going to be a healthy situation. So we would rather keep people isolated and try to get your lines energized. That's, that's the biggest update I have for you. Concerts at the bandshell were canceled, we are in trouble with bands. We have, obviously, revenues way down to pay for the bands, and the governor's order of 500 or less people. We have no way of controlling that, and frankly, just about every concert we had at the bandshell last year had well over 500 people, and we wouldn't know how to shut that off. We're, it's a free concert at the bandshell. I think it's just a year of cancellations, it's a year of, we'll wait till next year, and that's the case as well. I don't know if the play went on tonight, today was supposed to be their closing night. But there's a play up at the bandshell that was well-received, and it was nice to see some family. Our, our beaches remain open, our boardwalk went to a two-way boardwalk, Parks and Rec. Our, um, our beaches remain open. Our boardwalk went to a two-way boardwalk, Parks and Rec. Um, uh, got together and, um, had a consensus to, to move it to two-way. Uh, there's, there's some people will be disappointed with that. We would recommend that if you can, and if it has been, if it's become your habit, continue to walk the loop. Continue to start somewhere along the loop and walk easterly on the boardwalk and come back on the, the, the main street sidewalks. Uh, that will cut down the people going two ways. It will cut down the amount of, uh, cross traffic and, um, you might feel better about that. We'd appreciate that if you can. But there are a lot in our community who are just screaming out for us to do that and to, uh, open it up for two-way because they can't make the whole way and, uh, they want to get out too. So that's it. Are there any questions for the selectmen?
Mark, how many roads, do you have a number of roads that are currently not open due to downlines with trees?
Roads not open. It was still a half a dozen the last time I looked. Um, we had a hundred and two trees, poles or wires down a, at the end of the storm. That's, that's what was reported. And of course, not all of them are reported. So more than a hundred and two, um, calls came in of different trees, telephone poles, transformers or wires on roadway that needed to be cleared. Um, it's a huge amount for our, our town. That's about one, one per mile.
So if there's a half dozen of so left, uh, does the town have the means if there's a need for emergency medical attention where a road is blocked off that they can get to?
Well, you know, they, I, go make it work. Um, it was slow response time and I know there's one road in your neighborhood, your neighborhood, that's blocked. And, and that was the number one priority this morning at eight o'clock when we had our meeting. And at my three o'clock meeting, it still wasn't even looked at. So I don't know what's going on there. They could be there right now. So, um.
I don't think so, but anyways.
Do your favor. Send me a text. I don't care what time of the day it is.
The only reason I ask is I have a neighbor on this side of the.
I know.
Bringing down lines who has had, I won't say frequent, but more than two or three occasions where an ambulance has had to remove.
You're aware of your particular neighbor and when we know that said, your neighborhood is, um, you know, it's, well, it's dead end and there's a tree there. So how are you gonna put an ambulance on it? The boys would have to jump over the tree with a stretcher and, and, and run. Um, and, and, and that's not ideal. Uh, there's no other way to do it. And, and, and Eversource has been notified.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Rydebrook Rehab Center, Rydebrook Nursing Home, if you will, on Liberty Way, uh, their generator could not keep up with their A C demand. And at three or four o'clock, when I spoke to the manager over there, again, number two on our priority list today, right behind Paul's, uh, street, is, is, you know, trying to save that. They were eighty-four degrees inside. Uh, and you're talking a hundred some odd patients that are, you know, already in, you know, vulnerable, uh, health, uh, situation. And now you have them in, um, awful air quality conditions. So that being said, if there's nothing else, um, public comment. I may, I may have muted all. There you go, Steve.
Thank you. Uh, ju- just a couple of brief comments. One, uh, I want to, uh, thank Paul for his comments, uh, regarding, uh, trying to address some of the concerns, uh, regarding the full cost of the project and actually having a, a two-way conversation. I think your approach is a constructive one. I think labeling it unfounded, uh, is not a way for us to get to yes. Uh, and I think your approach is a much, much better way. And may, there may be good reasons for every item, but in the absence of effective dialogue, uh, you know, it allows, uh, allows people to have questions and concerns that can, uh, get in the way. Uh, Kevin, thank you for your kind words. And my last comment, really, the last two comments, one is Mark, you know, I was never suggesting that the detention center wouldn't be funded for twenty years. Uh, so, you know, I was really talking about a, a two or three-year deferral. Dan's comments earlier about the certification in twenty twenty-five. So really trying to keep the debt curve down, uh, and leverage the Dominion sale. If the Dominion sale is, is as we hope it to be successful within the next twenty-four months or so, that could be a source of funding. So I wasn't trying to do a twenty-year deferral on that. I was talking about a two or three-year deferral as a way of flattening the debt curve, uh, at, at a time that we're really dealing with it. And, uh, the group is obviously, uh, very committed to this project. I think most of your comments were very thoughtful. Uh, there was silence on the idea of applying grants, uh, as a source of funding to reduce the debt. Uh, but I would encourage you to consider that as we move forward. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Yes, I have a question, a couple of comments.
Okay.
Um, I did have a very good conversation with Roseanne a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, I'll say one thing. She and I usually are on the same page on things. I, I'd just like to say, and I'm not, I hope you'll take this as a positive aspect. It almost seemed like you guys didn't do diligence first time around with this because, and because of the lack of due diligence, your capability, I think, has been compromised by many people in this town. And like I mentioned before, it's the drip, drip, drip scenario. And so now people have lost confidence in what you're asking for. First it was five and then it was six they gave you and then seven and a half or seven point two. And I've actually been told it's really gonna be more like eight point two. So I'm, I'm really wondering, uh, what happened if you have an overage and you don't make the seven point two and it goes over? Are you gonna stop the building or are you gonna come back and say, oh, we need another million? So I, you guys need to do a better job, uh, due diligence. And I know you have sure, uh, you guys can do it. But, um, you know, it's just, this, I'm very much in support of the police department. I've always supported the police. I'm very much in favor of a police, new police station. But, uh, I think the way you guys have presented it, it's causing a lack of, a lot of concern, for a lot of the people in this town. And that's, uh, basically all I had to say. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, if I could.
Yes.
Um, Dan Price, two oh five Upper Patagonia Road, again, Chairman of Police Commission and Vice Chairman of the Vision Committed, Commission. Um, you know, we were always around six million. We added the elevator cab and a few other things to make the, the building more beneficial to the town. The, the Board of Finance cut us from six million to five million. So then we, you know, needed to come, said come back to us with the six million, which we will do. Um, we, we, we're not that far off. New London missed their appropriation for their school by a hundred percent. They were off by literally a hundred percent. But neither here nor there. We've gone through these numbers a, a bunch of times with the, the commission has done the best job they could to present the numbers and why they are. I keep wanting to going, I keep wanting to go back to this new law. This new law changes everything. We have to be accredited in four years. And Steve, you're absolutely right. If we can put the cells off for a couple of years, we should. But, but we have about a four-year timeline that everybody needs to be cognizant of and that's not gonna change. This new law changes everything about this argument and everybody's treating it like it's just the normal wells. Should we spend five million? Should we spend seven? No. This law changes everything about policing in this town. And if we can put the cells off for a couple of years, I'm fine. Twenty years, the town of Waterford's not gonna do that. We're gonna end up having to pay Waterford to build a building for us to be in. So I'm just wanting everybody to be aware of the new law, the impacts on our, on our police department. As the Chairman of Police Commission, you know, this is changing everything. Body cameras, uh, there, there's all kinds of things in this that, that impact us and will be impacting us. So, you know, the, the question of the cells, we might be able to put them off for a couple of years, but not that long. And, and, and that's where I am. Thank you.
Okay, uh, any other comments? I'll, I'll speak.
Anna has a, a hand up.
I just, well, I just wanted to, um, mention, since Mr. Lawson brought it up, that, um, the bond resolution, um, does include language so that if the town were to obtain any grants during the period that we were working on the project for a specific part of it, we would, um, you know, we would ply that against the project and therefore at the end of the day, bond less dollars. So I just wanted to, um, point out that the, the full text of the resolution does, um, incorporate such language.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, and that was gonna be my follow-up comment is we, we often get grants in the process of a construction project uh, or don't use all the, um, contingency. You know, there's a hefty contingency on this project, um, that, you know, projects happen and, and contingencies are needed, but, but we'd like to think that we're not gonna use it all. And that also doesn't get financed and that gets, uh, that's money that is, is returned, if you will. Um, so, and, and not financed. So that's part of that project as well. You're, you're right. We, you, that half a million dollars for the sale of the building will come, but that's gonna be after a, a round of brownfield grants, cleanup and all that. It's two or three years off and, and, um, there had been some talk about, um, future maintenance of the building because that was talked about. We're buying a used building someday. And it was talk about creating a C N R E for maintenance specifically for that building, uh, in the future, using funds for, from the Dominion building that they're still, um, willing to sell us for a dollar. So any other selectmen responses?
Well, I'd just like to say in terms of, in terms of defying some of these things, it's much cheaper to have it done. And we have all the construction crews here and everybody's working. We don't have to disrupt, the building's empty. We don't have to disrupt work procedures. Uh, and I think that it's something that we might have to have done. I think we should do it now when, when we have all of the equipment here, when the building is under renovation. And so trying to pre-sneak it two years down the road. And bring out companies and do rebidding and all of that.
Right. Go through this process again.
The other risk besides interruption to an operating public safety building would be any increased costs if we did it two or three years from now and any increase to the bonding rate.
Just interest rates.
Interest rates. Those things could, could add more money. Uh, and, uh, that's, uh, what I wanted to add because there, there are some unknowns out there. But we'll, uh, we'll have to see how the Board of Finance, uh, proceeds and after we, uh, make a presentation and we, we break down the costs and, uh, address the, uh, what's been put on record.
We'll move into the Board of Finance, uh, as our vote, uh, already indicated. And, uh, they do meet next Wednesday. I don't know if, um, uh, the chairwoman will put it on her agenda or not, but that is the, that is, that is the plan. So keep your, um, keep your schedules open and your ears and eyes peeled for that. We'll make an announcement soon when we know better. Um, motion to adjourn?
Hey Mark, real quick, real quick, ju- just, just to follow up with one of Ed's comments and just to reiterate what you said, there is a ten, there's an eight or ten percent contingency in there that if we do have some unforeseen, um, cost increases, the things that we don't know, there is money in there to cover. We don't have to go back before the voters.
Energy is ten percent. It's three hundred thousand dollars.
Right. And if we don't need it, then that gets returned. And hopefully we don't need it.
Don't move. Kevin's here. Don't move.
Second.
All, uh, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good night all. Stay safe and hope you get your power.